Meeting to order at a little late, 7:32. Can we please get a roll call?
Ms. Bernstein? Ms. Krishen?
Yes.
Ms. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Here we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is going to be the consent agenda. Before we go there, though, I would like to move up on the agenda. Our discussion with Lily Zhang, since she's available now.
Okay.
They are available now, I'm sorry. So, we will put that right behind the consent agenda before public comments. So, the first item is the consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like to have anything on the consent agenda removed from it? A hearing unseen none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move to present, to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mara. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. Can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Krishen?
Yes.
Ms. Glaubinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda then will be the presentation slash discussion with Lily Zhang. Kate, do you want to take a second and introduce?
Oh, sure. It is my great pleasure to introduce Lily Zhang, who we have been speaking with now for several months and who we looked at their proposal last month. And so, they are here to talk to us a little bit more about what work that they do, as well as answer any questions the board has. So, Lily, this is the board. Would you like us to go through and introduce everyone individually?
Yeah, that would be great. And if you could also just give me a quick heads up about roughly how much time we have to talk, and I can tailor my comments accordingly.
Okay.
I'll leave that up to Jay.
Well, we had a lot of the specific time. About how much time do you typically?
So, I can talk about the work that I propose doing in probably 15 to 20 minutes. I was thinking most of our time would be spent just talking and getting to know each other a little more, since I'm sure, you know, the value of having me here isn't just reviewing the proposal, but y'all getting a chance to ask me questions. So, maybe call it 30 to 45 minutes, perhaps? I'm just throwing out a number. I don't know what's on the rest of your agenda. I can make it shorter, I can make it longer. I'm pretty flexible.
But we could keep it, you know, to 30 minutes at the max.
30 is perfect.
Presenting them, we'll spend the rest kind of going back and forth and asking questions.
Great, sounds good to me.
All right, so we'll quickly go around. I'll just start to make it easy. I'm Beth Lily, I'm Kate Hall, I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the executive director here at the Northbrook Public Library.
Jay Glavenger, I'm the president of the board.
Abby Young, vice president. Nice to meet you, Lily.
Nice to meet you too.
I'm Kelly Durrow, she/her, and I am a trustee on the board.
Mark Krishen, she/her, and I am a secretary on the board.
I'm Kelly Durrow, nice to see you again. I'm the assistant director. I use she/her pronouns.
Phil Collins, he/him, adult services supervisor.
Anna Aiman, finance and operations manager at the library.
Jennifer is typing away, but Jennifer McGee is is doing the minute.
Awesome. Yeah, I'm wrapping my head around this really interesting panoramic view that I'm getting right now. Are y'all sitting at a circular table, or what am I seeing? It's so interesting. Sorry to comment about technology. I'm just like, wow, you know, I'm like a big old fishbowl. So, great to meet all of you. Thanks for making time for this.
We have, I'm sorry, there's two more trustees. I just want to let them know.
Oh, yeah, apologies. I cannot see you all at the same time. I would love to meet the remaining two.
I'm Jamie Yu, she/her, and I'm the treasurer on the board.
I'm Barbara Unical, and I'm just a regular board member who just loves being here.
There's one other person that I think we should introduce, Janet, if you would. Next month, we have four members starting in May.
Yes, I'll be seated next month. Janet Specter.
Awesome. Great to meet you all.
All right, we have now gotten through everyone at the table.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm really loving how when someone speaks, the little mini camera decides to like zoom in on their face. It's very useful. Okay. Just confirming that y'all have the ability to see if I share my screen.
Yes.
Okay, I will go ahead and do that. Okay, so I'm just going to talk briefly. I will keep it to 10 to 15 minutes or so about the DEI assessment project that I proposed. And I will spend some time at the end of it talking a bit about myself and my approach, and we can sort of do a Q and A from there to make the most of our time together. So, I figured I would focus the beginning of this conversation on talking about the purpose of the assessment. So, my assessment that I proposed is to develop a quantitative foundation for the DEI work that we're going to be doing together. This foundation having, you know, concrete numbers to things like your belonging scores, your access to opportunity, people's perception of decision-making, people's experience of engagement, respect, inclusion. All of these key outcomes of DEI work will allow things like leadership accountability. We're going to be able to say in 2024, 2025, this number is our goal. This number was where we were at in 2023, and we're going to move from point A to point B through a DEI strategy. So, this approach that is laid out in the proposal and the approach that I take through my work is giving us the data and the concrete findings we need to be able to go through that kind of process. So, in general, because I anticipate that this will be a question that comes up, I also want to address pretty early on how I see my work comparing with the BlackBerry collectives, because that was y'all's previous DEI assessment folks. So, I'll talk first and foremost about how how I would frame a normal, let's say, comprehensive DEI assessment project, and how I'm tweaking my normal process for you, given your previous experience, already having done an assessment. Normally, I would conduct a pretty broad exploratory assessment just to figure out, you know, what's happening in this organization. I would talk to many folks. I would basically say, you know, here is either a randomized list of people to talk to, or here is a list sourced by my clients of people that I could interview, just to get a broader sense of what some of the broader dynamics are within the organization, what some of the key challenges are, what are some of the most salient topics. And then, from there, I would design a customized quantitative survey to measure key outcomes. Now, that entire first part, I am completely skipping for y'all as a client, because that sounds very similar, from what I know at least, to the work that the BlackBerry Collective did. It sounded like to me that the BlackBerry Collective's assessment project, and please forgive me if you're calling it something else internally, was a qualitative assessment project and mostly focused on talking to people, interviews, people's perceptions of their experiences, and their impressions of the culture at Northbrook. It was also a pretty broad assessment, from what I can see, not necessarily starting with clear hypotheses to test, but really taking a, you know, let's just cast a wide net and see what we find sort of approach. It's honestly sounding really similar to the exploratory assessment that I do at the beginning of my DEI comprehensive survey. So, how the project I propose will differ from this is that it's designed almost entirely to build on it, rather than redo existing work. I'm seeing the assessment that the BlackBerry Collective did as an enormous source of data. And essentially, the very first thing in the proposal that I laid out is I would want to, if possible, look through their data to make sure that there's nothing that I'm doing that replicates their work. I think there's some really interesting findings. I did get a chance to review the, what was it called? The after-action report with their conclusions and some of their major findings. I think that's an extremely valuable document. I would also, if possible, like to see some of the data that they used as well, because I plan to use that to design a tailored quantitative survey. So, essentially, in summary, you know, the assessment project that I'm proposing to you all today, or, you know, that I proposed a month ago or so, is going to be hybrid. It does have some qualitative data included in it, just because the platform that I prefer using, which is Culture Amp, does collect qualitative data alongside quantitative data. I'll explain a little more once I show a screenshot in the next slide of what you can expect if you use that platform. And frankly, most third-party surveying platforms are similar. So, if y'all have a preference for things like Qualtrics, or Lattice, or 155, or Pecan, or any of the many survey platforms in the industry, I'm happy to have a conversation about how we can adapt these efforts to the platform. And this assessment would be very focused. I would want to dive deeper into things that the BlackBerry Collective identified and data that they collected to make sure that if we are choosing to measure things, because everything about this assessment project is measuring quantitatively the key outcomes or processes that we think connect to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I want to make sure that we're measuring correctly, that we're not wasting our time, spending a lot of energy asking people about a thing that we already know much about. So, getting into the specifics, this is one example. This is actually a present client of mine. I've taken all of the identifying information out. This is a screenshot from a current client of mine right now of a DEI assessment project, pretty similar to the one I'm going to propose to all of you. So, on the left, you can see the participation rate. For this one, we got a 94% participation, which is excellent. It was for an organization of around 180 people at the time that we ran the survey. And as you can see, this survey collected data on multiple factors, including discrimination, belonging, voice, management. They called it first factor here. That's engagement, opportunities and resources, fairness, diversity, and decision-making. Essentially, these map on to some of the common key factors that quantitative surveys like this try to assess. And as you can see from the fact that there's a factor called first factor, all of this is customizable. I believe this client had, what was going on? I think the board of directors of this client had a specific desire to measure to what extent people in this company were aware of the corporate mission and believed that the company was sort of mission-aligned, which was a very, I think, specific survey question that wasn't included in typical, let's say, templates for DEI surveys. So, we added that custom question in and designed some metrics around it, which is why you have that factor called first factor, because it's not just engagement, even though we clustered it under engagement. I can geek out about survey methodology and all that later during the Q and A, if you're interested. But just see this as a snapshot of what this data looks like once it's collected. You can see here that there are favorable scores in green. This is essentially like a survey will ask you a question like, "To what extent do you feel comfortable reporting discrimination?" Or I think the wording is, "I feel very comfortable reporting discrimination if it occurs to me." Extremely agree, agree, neither agree nor disagree, disagree, extremely disagree. We essentially aggregate all of the favorable scores, so agree and extremely agree, and aggregate all the neutral scores and all the negative scores. And we sort of compile that into this broader dashboard. You can also see, depending on the survey platform, Culture Amp lets you see demographic slices, which is extremely useful when looking at DEI issues. That way, we can make, you know, a pretty authoritative statement saying, while we have, this is just an example, while we have 75% belonging overall at Northbrook, looking into our data showed that men's average belonging score was 90%, while women's average belonging score was 60%. That disparity emerges from X, Y, and Z. So, those are the kinds of findings that come from the sort of project that I'm proposing. I think they are different in a orthogonal way from the findings that the BlackBerry Collective created in that this is mostly driven by this quantitative process. It's really trying to measure DEI outcomes and assign scores essentially to these important outcomes, so that you can say, you know, maybe we have 75% belonging this year with 90% for men and 60% for women. Next year, we're going to set a goal to have 85% belonging on average and close the belonging gap by gender by 50%. That's just an example, right? So, this sort of process enables those sorts of goals and enables the DEI strategy. And in my opinion, really opens the door for a much more rigorous approach to taking steps on achieving DEI, which I think really helps leaders who are looking for concrete action, which is the thing I hear a lot, right? Like, Lily, what do we do? Happen we make sure that we're actually making progress? And measuring these important things helps us know that we're making progress. So, I will speed through the different phases of the project. These are all included in the proposal, so I won't describe each phase verbatim. I do want to share some notes, just some commentary from my end that may not have been in the proposal. And then I will take your questions after that. Oh, I should probably talk briefly about my approach, and then I'll take your questions. I'll be speedy about it. So, project phases. First phase, we're going to start with a very small assessment just to determine the level of trust in your organization. That's really important. Trust essentially predicts response rate, and it also predicts the validity of the data. If people are not feeling good about this survey, and we get less than an 80% response rate, for example, the data isn't as strong as it could be. The lower the response rate and the lower the amount of data people share, the harder it is for people like me to accurately interpret the data and to make sure that our findings are accurate. So, in this exploratory assessment phase, I do want to build some relationships. That is work that I'm going to have to essentially repeat, because I can't simply inherit the relationship that the BlackBerry Collective had. So, I will need to meet some constituents and to get to know them. I will be customizing the design of this trust assessment to make sure that it takes into account people's feedback and to make sure that it accurately measures trust. And then we'll sort of deploy the assessment, analyze it. I'm almost certain that it will show that people are excited about the survey. This should be really quick. It should take no more than a couple of weeks. Then, we get into the main baseline assessment. So, this assessment, I'm going to design it with basically taking into consideration all of the BlackBerry Collective's findings. There may be an optional additional data collection phase afterwards. For some of my clients, if people are not super talkative during the actual survey, they don't share too much extra information, and I'm lacking data. Let's say, a client of mine about a year ago had quantitative data showing that their queer and trans employees were having a really negative experience at work. But for some reason, their queer and trans employees had shared almost nothing about why they were experiencing that. We did do a follow-up mini-survey for that community specifically, just to get more information. So, this is optional. I'm hoping that we don't have to collect extra data, especially if I can review the BlackBerry Collective's data, because that's already there. So, after that, I'm going to analyze everything, both from the survey and from the BlackBerry Collective, if possible, and come up with final findings about what's going on, similar to that screenshot that I showed you earlier of what exactly your strengths and challenges are, the cause of any disparities that might exist, and some recommendations for next steps. And throughout that process, because it will take a couple of months, I will be offering guidance to y'all and any other leaders at Northbrook regarding communication, strategy. If people ask about, you know, DEI and how this connects to things, that's also something I'm happy to lend some support to. Then, from there, I'm going to work to organize a strategy working group. The goal with this is to connect with other constituents and to make sure that next steps feel like something that the organization is taking together. I never want people to feel like, oh, this is just Lily, an outside consultant coming to tell us what to do. And I've found in my experience that building that sense of ownership from the inside is extremely powerful for shared buy-in and for morale and momentum when it comes to doing DEI work. So, I'm going to advise and help create this group, but this is the group that's going to own the development of a DEI strategy, essentially a plan with goals of how to make progress. I'm going to deliver two sessions to upskill people in that group on how to design a DEI strategy, how to execute it, how to carry it out. Essentially, I'm trying to train the trainers. I'm trying to create little mini-strategy consultants from inside the org, so that I'm not needed in the long run. And then, if they have any advice that they need from me, I will be sort of on-call to help with that. Then I do it again, in probably a year to two years' time, depending on the pace of change. I'm a big fan of follow-up assessments. This is the thing that most of my clients ask about. They're like, Lily, why should we do two assessments? Because this gives you extremely useful pre- and post-testing. It lets you show whether all of your efforts have succeeded or not. It lets you see which areas you've made progress on and which areas you still need improvement with. So, I'll just sort of skip through this. It's the same thing. I do it again, and most importantly, for the second round of analysis, I both analyze the results on their own and compare the change in outcomes between survey one and survey two. So, that's pretty much the entirety of the proposal. I did do a lot of talking here, and so thank you for your patience. Tiny bit about myself, and then we'll jump to Q and A. My name is Lily Zhang. Hi, I use they/them pronouns. This is my bio slide. I repurposed it from another slide deck. I think the thing to know about me, and you might have gotten this sense in this conversation already, is I am super, super, super outcome-focused. I really want to make sure that if we do work, it works, right? It actually successfully measures things and allows us to make tangible, concrete progress. The thing that I frequently write about on social media is how oftentimes DEI work can be a lot of talk and not necessarily progress, right? And even times when there's action, it's not clear that action results in progress either. And it's difficult, I think, as leaders to be running an org and to be wanting to do the right thing and doing what you feel like is the right thing, but getting very little feedback as to, is this working? Are we improving things for our constituents? Are we actually meaningfully resolving challenges, removing barriers? And I'm a big fan of measure what matters. I think in DEI work, outcomes matter a lot. So, everything in my approach is designed to measure this work, to hold all of us, including myself, accountable for what we end up achieving, and to make sure also that when we've achieved something to be proud of, we know so, so that we can actually be, you know, truly proud of it, right? Like, when my clients have, let's say, addressed a fairness issue by, let's say, starting a pay equity campaign, they can measure people's perception of fairness and say, look, it was this two years ago. We did all of this work. We measured again. We fixed it, right? We are there. We've succeeded. We've done it. And I don't know about you, I really like that feeling of having the hard data, the proof that when we've done good work, we've done good work. So, yeah, just four things about myself. When I'm doing this work, I am as specific as possible about what I find. The reason why qualitative data is really useful for me is because it lets me assess why things are happening. So, I won't just tell you, hey, board of directors, you've got 60% belonging on average. I will try to tell you everything I can about what that means, where it's occurring, why it's happening, who it's affecting, and most importantly, what we can do to fix it. I think to that end, I care a lot about pragmatism. I know that y'all are busy. You know, people have a lot of competing demands for their time. I want to make sure that you come away from all of this work with very clear understandings of what you can do, what I will do, and what Northbrook as an organization will do to address whatever we end up finding. I'm also very customized. I don't know your organization yet. The more I learn about you, both as people and as an organization, the more I will be able to customize the survey, the approach, how I engage with you, et cetera. I'm not a big fan of one-size-fits-all. To that end, I'm also very agnostic about what I'm going to find. I don't know your scores yet. I don't think anyone in this room knows your scores, and that's what we're setting out to find out, right? So, and finally, I care a lot about systemic solutions. I'm a big fan of problem solving. I am not the right fit as a consultant if you're looking for someone who can do lots and lots of one-on-one coaching. That's not exactly my style. I prefer to look at organizational systems. So, things like processes, policies, organizational culture, organizational structure, incentives, rather than, you know, how can we work with one or two leaders who just need some personal guidance and coaching? If that's, if that sort of personalized approach is what you're looking for, I can refer out. But I will say, that's not the best fit for me as a consultant. I prefer to look at systems. And that's it. So, it was a lot of talking in a relatively short period of time. So, I will go ahead and stop sharing my slides and sort of give the mic back over to all of y'all. Please feel free to send any questions my way. Yeah, and I look forward to sharing anything I can to give you more information.
Thank you. I appreciate, number one, you're being, you know, sensitive to the time constraint. Everything you said, I think, is what we were hoping to hear in terms of the approach. One of our key concerns was the fact that we didn't know what we were getting into with the BlackBerry consultants and, you know, wanting to know how it would fit in, when you feel that we're not necessarily being duplicative of the work, so that the extent that you could benefit from it, you would be able to use it. I don't know how much of what you're looking for, you're necessarily going to find. And I don't know, Kate, if you've already shared any of that information with Lily.
I shared the after-action report with Lily, which we did not receive any of the data gathered in order to protect the anonymity of the staff. But certainly, we can reach out to TBC, and, you know, they would share it directly with Lily, because obviously, right, it wouldn't be shared through me or anyone else.
The other concerns I think we had were on the approach in terms of the approach focusing on the outcomes, which is something that we were wanting to know that was the case. So, I think that, you know, if there are others that have questions, we kind of go around the table.
I'm going to sneeze, so.
So, let's go with Barbara first. Jamie, I know you had maybe more concerns with the BlackBerry group than maybe some others. So, if you have some questions to...
I just have one question. I know that you talked about the follow-up assessment. This is going to, looks like from the schedule, it's going to be one year after. Is there any way we can continue to monitor that, kind of the numbers and the results?
Absolutely. So, this is contingent on your relationship with the third party. So, I don't host my own surveying platform, A, because that's a huge amount of work, and B, because that means that I would own, you know, the thing that my clients would want to continue using. So, my recommendation is Culture Amp. Full disclosure, I've worked with them for many years and do have a partnership with them. I do think they are best in class. If you do partner with Culture Amp, you just get access to their platform for as long as you work with them. And to be very frank, you could basically deploy everything I spelled out in this proposal by yourselves if you wanted to, right? So, there's actually nothing stopping you from just saying, oh, Lily, thanks for the referral. We're going to use Culture Amp. We don't need your help this time, which some of my clients actually do, once they get their... We don't need your help this time, which some of my clients actually do once they get their their once they raise their level of of comfort and familiarity with D E I work, that platform just becomes a way for them to maintain their ability to evaluate their workforce. So this sort of off-ramp is making myself redundant by your team having built enough trust and built enough, let's say, fluency with the Culture Amp platform and your workforce being comfortable enough with it that you just carry on the work yourselves. And to the extent that you need external help to, you know, touch base once in a while, I I always offer my services to long, long-term clients, right, to come back. But, yeah, that's that's always in the cards, right? My intent is to never make you sort of dependent on myself for more than one or two years to get the D E I services you need. So I hope that answers your question a bit. Culture Amp is separate from me. I just refer a lot of people to them.
That's my only question.
I have a question. In terms of the definitions and the commonality of understanding of some of the factors, for instance, what does trust look like?
Yeah.
Well, I can't remember some of the others, but you're saying to me, do you trust? I don't know how you're defining it or what commonly commonality we have in interpreting the word.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Pretty much, if we, well, if if we were to go ahead with this and to do that exploratory assessment, my goal is to figure out, is the organization ready to actually take this big assessment, right? Like, is our time and money going to be well-spent? Or do you need more prep work? The thing that I found in my experience that predicts that is, like you mentioned, trust. I am defining off the top of my head, though I guarantee when we send out communications, I I promise, you know, I'll I'll have a much more, let's say, tidy definition. Trust is people's belief that when we do D E I work, it's because we genuinely set out to succeed, right? It it predicts people's desire to participate in a survey. It predicts people's willingness to engage, and it predicts one of the most important things, which is participation rate. So if the people, if, you know, your constituents, your workforce trusts y'all, trusts me, trusts each other enough, it doesn't have to be like, you know, wow, this is the most trustworthy place in the world, but just, I trust that if a survey comes out, that it's because people's hearts are in the right place and I'm going to fill it out, right? That's what we're trying to assess there. And there are pretty much two outcomes. One is people say overwhelmingly, I might not be the happiest camper in the world, but I'm willing to give this assessment a shot. This seems different enough from the previous one. I feel confident that this is going to be useful, so I'm going to engage. The other potential outcome is, ah, I don't really see the usefulness of this yet, right? And that's very useful for us because it means, okay, maybe we need to do a little more work to help people understand how this assessment is different. Maybe we need to spend some more time on leadership communications and relationship repair or whatever else is needed to raise that level of trust. If that was the case, I would essentially either pause the project entirely until, you know, we can get to a point where they're ready for that survey. Or if there's interest in it, work with y'all to address whatever issues come up, if issues come up, right? It's essentially doing my diligence to make sure that we don't launch this huge survey initiative that falls flat because of things we could have perceived beforehand, right? I I just want to make sure that when we do work, it works, which is why there's that little mini trust assessment at the beginning.
It's almost as though I would need a glossary or a dictionary, how to define.
We'll get you one. We'll get everyone one.
My experience, my background, you know, my life experiences. And I look at the word trust and I would define it a certain way, both emotionally and rationally. And what you talked about was a totally rational. And trust to me is is encompassing emotional as well as rational. So if we're going to agree as to what trust means, I would like to know how we define it.
Yeah, that's that's an excellent comment. And I'll say now that all of the terminology I use in this project is up to debate and co-creation. So maybe we decide as a group that trust is not the right word and we find a better one, right? I've told you what my goal is, right? I'm trying to figure out if if that survey will be a success, but I'm not married to the word trust. So maybe as a group, right, we can figure out if there's a term that would better resonate with y'all and most importantly, would better resonate with your audience, with the constituents that I'm trying to survey, right? So, yeah, that's that's great feedback. And it's my hope that we can continue having more conversations like this about language and terminology and approach and whatnot as as we potentially work together.
Thank you.
So I have a question about the survey, and this is probably a question for everyone around the table as well as for you. How do you, how far-reaching do you imagine this to be? Is this strictly for the internally, for the for the library and maybe board members? Or are we going out to the community about with this as well? So that's kind of my.
That's a really good question, yeah. So most of my efforts focus on internally and maybe board members. If we were to survey the community, there's a slightly different approach we could take. We could, in fact, use the same survey. We just need to use a different survey methodology. The goal when surveying internally is to basically survey everyone, right? And if you get above an eighty percent response rate, you just assume that your survey findings are reflective of everyone, the whole population. For many reasons, including it's just really big, we can't do that same approach with the community. There's no way that we're going to be able to survey eighty percent of the entire community. And if you did, quite frankly, I, the consultant, would need another, maybe fifty people to analyze the findings. Communities are big. So if we were to survey the community, we could do a couple of approaches. That is quite honestly not outlined in my proposal right now, and we can keep talking about that. I'm flexible. And a different approach would mean, let's see, we could do random sampling, which means we can make like a little mini version of that survey, maybe on pen and paper, and have folks at the front desk pick out one person among every ten people who walk in and give them that survey. That sort of ram, random sampling methodology would let us survey a much smaller number of people, but hopefully extrapolate from that the needs of the community. And we could also do something similar to what the BlackBerry Collective did, which is just go out and survey members of the community individually and do very long-form qualitative interviews, not looking necessarily for the people we choose to be fully representative, but just hoping that all of the rich data we would get would still give us some useful insights into the needs of the community. Though I will admit that that's less of a quantitative approach compared to the one that I laid out in this presentation. So, long story short, I'm open to surveying the community that does require changes in methodology that are not reflected in the proposal that was mostly focusing on internal, because that's my bread and butter and wanted to start there. But I'm very open to conversation and especially if y'all are interested in that sort of random sampling method that keeps it at a scale that is still manageable for me. I just don't want to be looking through like multiple thousands of survey entries. That's tough.
You know, on that note, one of the, I think, questions, I don't know if anybody's proposed yet or if it was proposed by Kate. We are embarking on a strategic plan process. And so, you know, the question we had last meeting was, how might your process interact with and kind of maybe work with that strategic plan process?
Yeah, that's a great question. Can you remind me roughly when that process would be for y'all, just in terms of timing?
So in terms of timing, we're currently reviewing proposals and then we'll be doing interviews next month and hope to have a decision made in June with the kickoff then of the initial planning happening this summer. And then depending on which proposal determines kind of what the timeline might be, some of them are doing more of a quantitative survey. Others are recommending more of like focus groups, so that kind of will determine what the timing is. So there would be overlap. One of the things that we talked that I had in the proposal was letting them know about the potential of doing this work with you and that we would expect the outcomes of the work with you to also be incorporated into the larger strategic plan because I feel like it's really important that, you know, our E D I work isn't seen as like this separate thing that we do, but is actually part of the main thrust of the library.
Yeah, that's super helpful for me. So essentially, it does boil down to some extent to timing. But if I am doing my data collection and or analysis work at anything like the same time as other folks are collecting data, I can always look at more data and share my data vice versa. If I have findings before, let's say, the other folks have come to conclusions, I'm happy to share my findings with them as well. And if they finish first, then I can essentially tailor my final report to include some mention of of, you know, what they've ended up deciding. Basically, this is a very long-winded way to say, yes, I'm very happy to work alongside or in conversation with them, whether that's in terms of sharing data or customizing my final product to acknowledge the work that's been doing, that they've been doing there. So, yeah, very happy to do that.
Okay. And the reason I thought of that when Maura was asking her questions, because I think they're going to be focused more on the community survey side. Some integration.
Yeah, thank you.
That would be great, yeah. If anything, the 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 final report that the that will emerge from the surveying process is going to be my sort of final assessment of what's going on, why things are happening, and some recommendations for next steps. That doesn't constitute a D E I strategy. When I say D E I strategy, I mean a formal plan with formal goals to achieve X, Y, Z by this date by doing activities A, B, and C, right? That's something that I expect leaders within the organization to create together alongside their constituents. So if it's possible to have that strategy work that you're doing, at least crystallized to a workable point, by the time I pull together that strategy working group, I think that would be extremely useful because then you can create those two strategies together, rather than, you know, me saying, this is what we should do in D E I, and then someone else saying, you know, this is what we're doing more broadly within the organization. So it's a big timing question, I guess. But to the extent we can make them line up, that would make my my work extremely valuable, I I think. And I would see a lot of value in their work as well.
Questions, Maura? Stacy?
Yeah. I, we've talked about maybe getting the data from BlackBerry Collective. If we're not able to do that, do you have initial thoughts? And I realize this would require some exploration, but initial thoughts on filling that knowledge gap in a way that doesn't add significant time or expense to the project?
Yeah, so typically, when I do additional data collection, it's in a relatively intrusive way. I will do basically mini surveys. I'll basically say, hey, I have two or three questions that matter to me a lot. If you want to answer these questions, they are optional. You can choose to take an extra five to ten minutes to answer them, and any data you can share is going to be valuable to me. That minimizes expense. It doesn't necessarily minimize my time, that's more data, but it does minimize expense. I think the challenge there is if we can't get the data from the BlackBerry Collective, I would sort of necessarily need to redo some of their work because I can't see the data that went into their findings. And, you know, when I am coming up with my findings, I want to be able to look at all of the data possible rather than using the findings itself as data, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Hi, Lily. I I was really glad to hear that you are able to use the data, but yes, that's a good question. What do we do if we can't get it? But my question is more related to what Maura was asking about, I think it was Maura, serving the community. So I don't want us to necessarily bite off more than we can chew because this is such a large initiative in your experience. Is it better to do that as like a later assessment or in later phases and focus on internal first? Because it sounds like what you said is that you typically do focus on mostly internal, or that's what this proposal is designed. So what would be, you know, your recommendation on the most, the best way to progress with, if we did eventually want to, you know, get community feedback as well?
Yeah, I I will say that I almost always recommend starting internally before working with the community. The the sort of catchy one-liner is clean house before you show it off to people, right? And there's usually the expectation when you work with community that you've got your affairs in order internally. And oftentimes, you know, that's almost the condition of community engaging in D E I work because no community member wants to engage with you as a sort of a smokescreen to avoid internal issues of whatever-isms, right? Like, that's that's people's fear that you haven't done internal work and that you're just trying to engage in external stuff to take attention away from your lack of internal accountability, right? That's never the intention of the people who engage in it that I've worked with. But it's a real enough concern that I do recommend working internally first, such that by the time you go to community, you might not be perfect, but you can say, hey, we have these things ongoing internally. As part of our existing effort, we are reaching out to you as well to make sure that our commitment to D E I is reflected inside and out, right? There I I very rarely slash, I frankly, never seen it work the other way around, where they have that good relationship with community and then they focus on their internal issues. It it doesn't typically work out like that.
Thank you.
Hannah, Kelly.
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Maura.
I apologize if this has been addressed previously, but how do you see working with libraries as, what is unique to working with the library as far as the fact that it is? There is such a public side to it. That seems like an understatement to say.
Yeah, I I see it as, to some extent, similar to working with nonprofits, which I've done before, in that there are many staff that have this sort of dual role where they're facing the community and then facing internally as well. The the degree to which different people face community varies. And that that's almost one of the 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 factors that explains differences. That that could be something that we design a survey around, right? Like, it could even be a demographic category. To what extent is your role external-facing? I find that useful because there's oftentimes a broader range of, call it emotional intelligence, call it connection to community, call it people having a pulse on the issues that matter to local folks, in that that's challenging for the culture of the org. I also find that, not libraries specifically, but most nonprofits have people who care a lot about helping. It's a very service-oriented culture. And there are unique aspects of service-oriented cultures, right? Some of them being that because folks are there because they care about the mission, there's oftentimes a lower comfort in sharing difficult feedback. Sometimes these kinds of environments can be very niceness-focused. There's probably a better way to say that, right? A focus on like being nice rather than raising tough and critical feedback, right? A focus on maintaining like cordial relations with each other and not shaking the pot too much, which has its own challenges, right? It means that there's often a greater sense of mutual respect, but a lower tolerance for conflict and challenge and tough feedback and and the word that comes to mind is aggression, but that's not what I what I mean to say. So there are some unique cultural challenges. I think there are challenges related to your relationship with local communities. I also find that libraries, especially right now, are kind of, there's a lot of culture war happening, culture war things happening in society right now. So libraries are oftentimes finding themselves sort of on the spear tip of these big, broader issues and big, broader conversations about racism and learning and access to information. Of these big broader issues and big broader conversations about racism and learning and access to information. Transphobia and so on and so forth that require. I just think a really, really high level of competence around navigating issues of racism, sexism, all the isms. That just isn't present yet, right? So the bar is really high, first of all. And you're full of really helpful people who care a lot about each other, who care a lot about the work, who might also feel kind of. In over their head, given everything that's been happening. And it's a whole bunch of people who want to do the right thing and. Don't necessarily have the means or tools to carry it out yet, is my sort of assessment of the of libraries. But I I could be missing many somethings, so.
Thank you.
Kelly and Anna, did either of you have questions?
Just sort of building on Maura's question, have you, do you have previous experience working with libraries specifically? Or similar types of organizations?
Not libraries per se. I have a lot of experience working with corporations. I have some experience working with governments. I have some experience working with nonprofits, a lot of experience with higher ed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else before? All right. Well, thank you for taking the time to present the proposal to us and answer questions. We are, I think, going to table the discussion until we get to the point in the. Agenda where we had it originally, because I do have some other people who are here to present. I don't want to keep them too late. It's getting a little late than I thought. So if you don't mind, Lily, Kate will be responding back to you once we've had the discussion later in our meeting. But thank you so much for, you know, spending so much time and giving us the detailed explanations and answering the questions. Because I think it's been very helpful for us to better understand. What your aspect and proposal would be and your process would be and how that would fit in with some of the other aspects of what we're doing right now. And I think it's all been positive, so.
All right. Well, thank you so much for making time for me. And yeah, I look forward to hearing back. I hope you have a great rest of y'all's meeting and take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Lily.
The next point on the agenda is public comments. We have the policy, okay. There's no public in the room besides the staff. So I think we'll move on to the staff.
I have Phil all lined up and ready to go.
Let's turn it over to you.
All right. Well, thanks for having me, Phil Collins, Adult Services Supervisor, and I'm also the Chair of. Our One Book, One Northbrook 2023. And so what we'd like to do with One Book, One Northbrook is encourage community members to all read the same book at the same time. In an effort to kind of foster community connection, learning engagement. Through both the book itself and series of programs related to the book's themes. What we have for our selection is Clark and Division by Naomi Hirahara. We had about 50 or so suggestions from both the community and staff. We went through with staff and community members kind of narrowed it down. We heard a lot of feedback about our five finalists. This by far, I think, had the strongest feedback from the community and we heard a lot of feedback that. We would like to have a title with AAPI representation and we're very happy to have selected one. And I think the Chicago connection is a strong factor too. So to say a little bit more about the book itself. Clark and Division. It's about a family. It's fiction and family that was incarcerated in Manzanar following the attack on Pearl Harbor. And it kind of starts off at the point where the family is released from incarceration. And in California, what happened historically is a lot of families weren't sent to where they lived in California. They were told you can go live in Chicago or other cities around the Midwest or East. And so the population of Japanese Americans in Chicago went from about 400 before World War II to about 20,000. And so this is about one family, their experience and. Trying to find their way in a new city and make home. It's also a mystery. So there's a lot to it, but I think there's a lot to talk about. And a lot of interesting programs that were lining up at this time. So to give you an idea of what we have coming up programming wise. Do you have an event with the author books? Very excited about that. Naomi Hirahara will be here in person in the auditorium. October 18th, that's a Wednesday evening, 7:00 PM. And so that'll be kind of an in conversation program. In addition to that, we have Eric Matsunaga of the Instagram account Wendy City Niki. And he's been doing quite a bit of research into the history of Japanese American neighborhoods in Chicago. And so he's going to kind of walk us through that, walk us through Clark and Division. And then it kind of moved up to Clark and Belmont in later years. And different spots, businesses that were and and still are, in some cases, owned by Japanese Americans. We have the Sukasa Taiko Drumming Group toward the end of October. That'll be a fun musical program in the auditorium. We have someone from the Newberry Library to talk about the Newberry Library's role in the book. And any kind of collections and items of interest in their library. So looking forward to that as well. For families, Sakura Tales are going to be kind of Japanese folktales. And, you know, that'll be geared more toward youth and family audiences. We're also looking at screening the film Farewell to Manzanar to give a little more context in history about experience in Manzanar. We're working on booking a presentation dealing with Asian American mental health. And of course, we're going to have various book discussions with both staff and patrons. We're looking at doing a kickoff event on Saturday, September 30th, right before October. Going to have a live band, hopefully some food and fun, fun things to kick off the series. So those are, those are some of the main programs we're lining up right now. And looking forward to making this a fun event for the community. And hopefully start some engaging discussions with people as well.
Really thoughtful.
Good question.
I encourage something with art also.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think I think we can do that. Yeah.
Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, and we're still working on getting all of the books ordered, but the board will get copies so that you can all fully participate in all these great things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
All right. So next would be Michelle and Susan to present about the EDI Committee and.
I am the Assistant Manager at the Maker Services Department, AKA the Collaboratory.
Oh, hi again. I'm Susan Wolf. I'm the Adult Services Manager and also Co-Chair of the EDI Committee.
Yes. Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it. The EDI Committee is so passionate about the work that they do. So much so that they look forward to watching the board meetings every month. So just FYI, we love it. And so we're very happy to be here. Quick overview of our presentation. We want to go over the formation of the EDI Committee. As well as the community feedback and staff feedback that we've gotten from programs or trainings that were offered. Recap of 2021 and 2022. It sounds like it was a long time ago. It was. What we plan to do in 2023, project wise and group, work groups, and how it all kind of aligns with the strategic plan. So with the overview, the EDI Committee had its first meeting in August of 2020. Partly in response to the current events that were happening at the time. But also from the feedback that staff received just from various stakeholders. So staff recognized that there were a lot of gaps and areas of improvement that the library could have in its services. In its resources and program offerings, because they interact with the community on a regular basis. And so with that, our committee, our library committees usually have about seven to 10 members. Our committee has 18, and that doesn't even include the ad hocks. So just kind of keep that in mind because that's a reflection of what staff value at the library. As well as the passion to improve the services at the library. With that being said, these are all of our current members of the EDI Committee. The most common thing that staff ask when wanting to join the committee. Is that they say that they just really want to improve the services at the library to serve the diverse, growing diverse community that we have. So here are a few feedbacks that we kind of gathered from the community in terms of like the programs that we offered in the past. So this was one of them back in October 2021. I'm kind of kind of zip right through them a little bit here. Here's another one from a patron from one of our Let's Talk, Let's Talk programs.
the library staff, from Kate, from the board, offered a lot of comfort in a very difficult time. So thank you very much.
So we met today. We had the plan and the timeline, and we will report back next meeting.
Okay, this is going to be going very late, so we are going to be here for a couple hours more. So if you can share with us or email it, that'd be great.
It's just disrespectful.
I understand. All right. Thank you. Kate, if you want to go on to this after report?
Sure. So I put this in my report, but I wanted to just see if anyone was interested in attending all or part of the American Library Association Conference. It's in Chicago from June 22nd to the 27th at McCormick Place. There's lots of, I outlined a few things. It's also if you'd just like to go to the exhibits, that's also really interesting to see different vendors. So if that is of interest to you, just contact Anna or I and we'll get you registered. I also wanted to mention that we had Student Government Day this last Monday. And I had this on my note, Jamie's son was there. He did not get assigned to the library. But that's okay. That's okay. We had a wonderful time as always. Anna and Kelly and Susan and Summer also participated. And this is just a great opportunity for us to highlight what it's like working in a unit of local government and hopefully encouraging kids and are thinking about what they want to do in their lives to think about serving their community in a local government. So it was, this will be also in my report next month, but because this is in April. But I just wanted to mention it was a lot of fun. And I also wanted to mention that I am going to be off next week. Luckily Kelly is so excited to be back in the library. And I am going to Michigan, so I promise not to get COVID. I can't promise that, but. I'm sorry. Yeah. So but even if I do, I won't have to wait to fly back like I did for yesterday. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the rest of my report.
Next item, or your member reports. Before, Kelly, before you step out. As we're at the board meeting, we're supposed to tell you all, express our condolences to you and to us.
Thank you.
We appreciate the circumstances through, we're happy to have you back. And we hope that Kate and staff are able to help you make it an easy transition back.
Absolutely. I would say that the support that I had from the library staff, from Kate, from the board, offered a lot of comfort in a very difficult time. So thank you very much.
So we met today. We had the plan and the timeline, and we will report back next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Is anybody else on the board who want to make any sort of report?
She will be here next month.
Right away. Especially if she's here. We do have a certificate of appreciation that will be presented to Sharon. So for anyone that's here, the meaning or our plan is to thank her for her years of service. We have a little cake, and hopefully we can reach out to her and we will be able to be doing this.
Oh, yeah, we have a gift that we'll be giving Sharon in thanks for her many years of service.
This will be framed.
And that will be framed. And the formal resolution will be passed at the meeting next month. So we're kind of preemptively getting it ready.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the G P business. I'm sure unfinished business. Personally, I wonder unfinished business is discussion about Lily Thang's proposal. So I want to open up this in general discussion, impressions on the presentation.
I'm going to let Kelly come in and add some of this.
Yeah.
So just to know impressions on the presentation, thoughts about moving forward, questions, concerns that we have come up with. I don't know. Not to make it structured, but just sort of I'm going to kind of step in and say.
I love that. Well, I thought the presentation was great. I love that they're going to use our data. I'm going to believe it, but. Because I know that was something we specifically talked about last month. That was the first thing they addressed, and I thought that was just fantastic.
Just like a tapping.
Just to be clear.
Makes me feel better.
I didn't have any additional questions. I think Lily addressed the concerns that I had. I, over the past couple of months, read Lily's book, and I think that was also helpful to understand how the outcomes-based approach would be different than what we experienced, and everything they said tonight supported, I mean, obviously, they wrote. So everything they said supported that and reaffirmed that for me. And I also appreciated that they have thought at least a little bit about what we would do if we couldn't get access to the data from the previous assessment, and that it wasn't going to be some huge commercial process to do a complete assessment, that it could just be some mini assessments tacked on to what we're already doing and wouldn't be a significant delay.
I also was very impressed with their presentation and their process. I am concerned about the fact that they don't have any specific library experience, that I think that it's because libraries are like not about, it's not all internal. And so that gives me some pause that I feel it's a lot of time and money for one part of what we need to do. Whereas I think there's, there's part of it that sort of really addresses the community side. They haven't addressed, or that I haven't seen. That's my concern. But I'm welcome to hear what the, you know, actual phrase.
I mean, I think for, you know, Lily's approach is, you know, in terms of doing the community-wide, you know, assessment is less. But I think if I sounded very, Lily, I know many of the consultants said, you know, very willing to work collaboratively. I do think that as a public-facing institution, it is really important that we not do the EDI work, not just internally, but also externally, because we want the people walking in the doors to feel included and that this is a safe place for everyone in the community. I would say that one of the things that, you know, our biggest resource in the library, it's not our books, it's our staff, right? It is where we spend the majority of the budget. And they are ultimately what make people feel included and seen. And as Susan and Michelle pointed out, like, you know, making sure our services are aligned. And so I do agree with Lily that we need to, you know, make sure internally that we have a solid foundation and that staff feel seen and heard, and that then that in turn helps them make, you know, extends that into the community. I obviously don't regularly work a service desk. Susan lets me do it like an hour a month when they have their department meetings, so I get a little. But she actually probably would be able to speak more clearly to how the, how it would work, given that she does get to work a service desk regularly. And more of us asking about kind of the fact that Lily doesn't really have any library experience, and that it was gonna be more internally focused.
So it's not about necessarily the programming, or the collection, or the services, and those sort of things, that it's, that are specific to a library. And maybe there's a way of incorporating that, but it really does sound like it's more internal and organizational, which is great, but I don't feel, I mean, I don't know if, but I don't feel like that's, that's sort of maybe half of what we want to do, or maybe I'm not sure what the percentage.
We want to do all the things.
Right, right. And I don't know if, like, do we do a little bit of this and a little bit of that, or do we do this now and do that later, how that works, so.
I'll just use the example, because this is in a report, that really surprised me is the feedback from the Welcome mural. And I think it's like, it just kind of shows, like, we, we do, I mean, we do public placing stuff. We do, I think, we're very well skilled to do programming. We bring in the experts when we don't know. But because I think we still haven't built that internal foundation, sometimes we do things, like the Welcome mural, and we do not understand the impact that it has on some staff members. Not all staff members, but, you know, there's some that, that really felt like it was like kind of premature, just because we haven't built that, that foundation. So, I mean.
Technically should, but like, we're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, we will be welcome.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, with the best of intentions, of course, you know. But, so, you know, I will say, I mean, I've taken some webinars, and spoken now to Lily a few times. I mean, I just, the chance to work with them is pretty appealing. They're just really, really, really smart and very, like, even though they haven't worked at libraries, but whenever, you know, we say things, and they're, they just, they know what we're talking about, you know? And I think that just the perspective from working with other public-facing organizations. So, I mean, I, you know, I had that concern initially that it would be duplicative, you know? And that was like one of the first things that they addressed before we were even asked the question. So, I mean, I, I think it's still really important. I don't think that we've gotten the full picture yet.
So that if we were to move forward with the proposal, that would be then giving you a point where you can now take qualitative information to make, you know, some strategic plans for addressing EDI. Then so for a laser stage, looking outward?
Yeah, I mean, I still, yeah, I mean, I still think that, I think the, the approach that, that we took before, you know, was just so different. And I mean, it was really, I don't know, kind of a, the work was kind of more on this internal kind of personal level, but like, we still don't feel like see the whole picture yet to be able to set like strategic priorities. So I would hope that this, and the fact that you kind of have this baseline, and then you can measure, because that's the most frustrating thing, is that you're making all this effort. It's really hard work, very, it takes a lot out of, out of us, you know, to do it. And we want to make sure we're doing the right thing, so we're having the right impact. And I still don't feel like we know, you know, from, from what we have now. So, yeah, I think very helpful.
Yes, well, as far as, in the presentation, Lily talked about, just kind of early on the discussion. You know, to the library, if you take the results and put it into strategic planning.
Yes.
Come up with that aspect.
Yes.
And, you know, if there's concern that the proposal is more inward-facing or outward-facing, I don't think it necessarily makes it a bad proposal. But it says to me that if we go through this, it's stage one. And then stage two is now, we completed stage one. How do we take a look for stage one, and then look at stage two, and use it to guide stages? That may be, you know, either talking to Lily about those who may now have the ability on a separate proposal to do that stage two, or can we push somewhere else, or can we do it ourselves?
Right. And I think the hope is that we gave them knowledge and skill to be able to do it ourselves with potentially, you know, some consulting hours to help check on things. But I also think that the strategic planning process will, does allow us to get data that will also be really useful. And I would say, like, I've looked into Culture Amp a little bit more after having talked to Lily about it the first time I spoke with them. And that tool is something that we absolutely can use with the community, and I think would be really valuable after having used it internally, because we have a deep understanding. I mean, we are not data analysts. But I think that the tool, I know, so we'll just have Abby do the analyzing. But the tool is such that it doesn't, it kind of doesn't bore you in a sense. It doesn't let you fear too much away, you know, they have the wording, so you make sure that you're not wording things correctly. And I think that that is important in the community. I think one of the biggest issues we have on a community-facing side is that we know all the people that walk in the door and love us. That's really easy, right? We hear about that all the time. We know the people that are very vocally upset about something, because we hear from them quite clearly. What we don't know are those people that fall in the middle. And are they not coming in because they don't feel welcome, because we don't have something for them? And some of those groups are our immigrant population, our Korean population, people with disabilities. And that's what we need to gather the data on. And doing that as part of the strategic plan will then give us that data to use that in taking the EDI work to that second level, I would say. At least that's how I've been looking at it.
I'm also impressed with their presentation. I appreciate having this opportunity to, like, listen to them actually directly speaking about it, because it did kind of give me a clearer picture of what their approach and, like, what we would expect. And I thought that they had addressed the question of using the BlackBerry collection as well as how they work with the strategic plan really well. It's, I thought they were thoughtful, they were problem solver. Like, they actually were not just, you know, coming in with something. Like, I think they just, they gave me confidence in terms of their ability to work with, you know, us and, you know, other groups, but also just, I think they have pride in their work. I trust their ability and intention.
It's interesting. I had a couple of reactions. I thought they were first-rate in terms of knowledge and background, and certainly professionalism and pride. I got the sense that they wouldn't put their name on anything less than a property as well. It was not, it was not a canned presentation. It wasn't gonna be something you were gonna see from someplace else. I found a couple of interesting dichotomies. One was the intellectual perspective versus the emotional. I don't think there's gonna be a lot of money in terms of how they're going to enter it. I don't think that's bad or good. I just think an expectation needs to be realistic, that, that they're business. And what I was asking about, the common language. It was, and interesting, it hadn't occurred. And how they dealt with it was, find another word. I thought, okay, then let's be realistic about what we can expect on that level. And also the difference between listening and hearing and talking. I'm not sure she listened, as you say. And then responded to what, to just clarification. They, oh, I'm so sorry. But I think that they could have done a little less talking and maybe more clarifying, and make sure they were addressing the issue completely. And I'm a real believer in asking questions. And I think they could have, when you were asking certain things, wanting to know clearly what you were asking specifically, rather than painting the entire canvas. So I totally think that they will be professional in every sense of the word. I think it's important to be realistic in what my encounter is. Limitations, if you will, or just characteristics.
I think they're very impressive, and that they are, I think they would do great work. I'm not sure if they're a perfect fit for us, but that would be my, that's my thought. Just more because of the, the experience with libraries, not because of the approach, but because of the specificity of the library. They seem to have a very good approach to things, but it seems to be more general and less individualized with a different organization. I think that's just something that requires a follow-up question about how they would have.
I'm kind of like the game, so I, and I don't have these mechanics, the Blackberry reps, I don't really know how to integrate those two things. I was very impressed with the presentation. I was not entirely confident that they really understood how much they wanted to integrate this with the strategic planning process. They said they would, but what I heard was, in my final report, I can include some reference to a strategic plan. And I thought, I think whoever, whatever consultant firm we hire with a strategic planning needs to fully integrate with a D E I consultant, regardless of who that is, including Lily, if that is who the board chooses to. I too noticed the lack of experience with libraries, and not just having worked with them before, but I felt myself did not really hit the target on what made libraries unique. Lumping them with nonprofits is, I thought, showed a true lack of understanding of what libraries are. They are much more aligned with public sector, the kinds of pressures and the kinds of public-facing interactions that a library has to have. Although they're also, they are inducted in service, also are much more aligned with things like municipalities and park districts and whatever that may be. There's a whole level there, having to do with tax pay dollars and accountability that nonprofits really just experience. But a very impressive presenter, and I also felt very businesslike and quantitative, which again, not necessarily that.
Well, I'm hearing some, a lot of libraries have been drawn. It sounds like the focus of the proposal was one that was, only the, my impression. Positive. So I guess the question was, are we to find out where we're saying yes, we'd like to engage Lily? Do we have more questions in the back to ask of Lily? Or are there different posts that someone might do of those? Because if they get this question, is it say, okay, we're gonna control Lily, let's talk about that first? Or to say, we're not comfortable with Lily, because we're not comfortable with Lily? What are the options, and what do we do next?
Can you apply us on that work?
It could be, you're asking.
I'm just saying, I think that there needs to be somebody who is asking the questions about why libraries are different than, you know, a nonprofit. And somebody who's kind of helping to steer that project.
I mean, we'll have, I would be chairing a committee that would have board members as well as staff members on it, that would be working with Lily on this process, and then of course bringing information. You know, as Susan mentioned, we have the opportunity to have multiple conversations with Lily. You know, Kelly and I, and Susan and Michelle and I. And I will say that while they haven't worked with libraries before, I do think that they very much heard of us when we talked about some of the challenges facing libraries around, you know, book challenges, and, you know, people coming to board meetings and concerns about things, and talking about the Welcome mural. And so I think that, you know, there will be people, myself and the others on the committee, that are the library experts, that will make sure that we are focusing on that. And that is really important. I will say, when they were talking about kind of, like, this might be a library, like the niceness piece, the lack of, you know, conflict, I was like, oh, yeah. They hit all of the buttons, all of the, you know, it was like spot on. So I think that they, from the conversations we have with them, have a pretty good read on what our institution is like. I do agree that they don't have as much, I think, on the, how do we assess on the community level? But I do think that we know how to do that. I think they can teach us the skills to do that. That's gonna be more valuable long-term, because then we'll be able to continue the assessment and looking at things over and over again, so. But I also recognize that this with the strategic plan is a significant cost outlay. And while we have a budget for it in our, in the, in the next year's budget, it is still a significant cost that shouldn't be entered into lightly, because it's not our money. It's our tax pay dollars, so.
That's a question that, yeah, where you, it was a report of those on role of Lily's faces.
Correct.
And it looks to me, and I didn't ask about it, it would be fantastic. Looks to me, we're not being everything wrong, and it has its phases.
Correct. So it's covered over a couple fiscal years. Oh, your Lily is coming. Sorry.
That's done. So, I mean, that means it's gonna be over multiple budget years.
Correct.
Okay. So that, I mean, helps kind of with some of the maybe the concerns about the costs, because it's not gonna be almost some just a single budget year, it's gonna be spread out.
I don't think it's exactly half and half. I think it's more like a.
Yeah, the faceboard was 25 out of 60, so 2 or 6, 4 or 6, you know, a third, 2 or 3. So.
There's some to the community that might want to board to do that, right?
Yeah, I'm assuming that if we wind up putting these BlackBerry collectives, it is gonna increase in cost.
Because the Culture Amp would be included in their proposal, I'm assuming.
Oh, yeah, Culture Amp, all of that is already included in the pricing. And from talking with Lily, it sounds like we wouldn't have an increase in price, because it would be adding onto the quantitative survey. So it wouldn't be doing focus groups, it would be asking for written narrative, so. Yeah. And they're not billing us hourly, as you saw in the proposal. It's based on, essentially focusing on the deliverables. So, so the fact that they're willing to, I think, just say like, yes, I will analyze this additional qualitative data, which is a pain in the butt to analyze. Qualitative data is hard.
So when we selected the BlackBerry collection, there were other vendors, consultants that we looked at, right?
Yes.
Did any of them have, outside of the BlackBerry collection, did the other?
Have a quantitative approach?
No, did they have library experience?
Um, I have to look at my list. Some of them did.
Can you remember some?
It's been, it's been over a year.
Some of them definitely did. I'm trying to think of the finalists, I think.
I mean, I don't think they all did. I think some of them did, and some of them didn't. If I remember correctly.
Did we get a full cost proposal from them as well?
Yeah. Yeah.
For me, that would be helpful to see, like, just even, did we look at these before? And I'm forgetting, I.
No, we didn't.
We did not, no.
Just, I mean, because it's, we only really have one comparison. I'm curious as to what the other consultants had in terms of library experience. But I also think. But I also think this is a situation where we want this very specialized skilled experience in DEI. So it's like, we have to balance, like, what is our priority here? Just like if you're hiring any kind of candidate, like, what are the most important things? I would say DEI experience is very important and that's what we're really focused on. I, I'm not sure how I feel about the lack of library experience. I do trust you, Kate, in the conversations that you've had. If you feel that they're able to incorporate that community piece of it, I'd be more, you know, comfortable with that. They seem extremely smart and knowledgeable. I do feel that they would put the time into understanding what might be uniquely different about us as a library organization. So I think it's good that we're pointing it out, but I'm not sure that, for me, that that would. I'd be more concerned if I wasn't as comfortable with the DEI methods and the experience.
Yes.
If that makes sense.
It does. Would you like me to share some of the, I got the finalists up?
Yeah.
So we had Michelle Silverthorne, her, we worked with her on the hiring audit. So that's her only experience working with libraries, was helping us do that. We had diversity, training, and consulting. I don't remember them. They worked with Chicago and Orland Library. And Biz Lindsay Ryan, who has worked extensively with Rails, has done a number of trainings with us, has reviewed our policy manuals. Dieta Jones, who has worked at like the ALA level with libraries, and they're one of the ones you may recall is a proposal. And theirs was, yeah.
They're one of our strategic.
Right, right. Yeah. Susan Feit, who was, had worked with nonprofits, actually had reached out to Lily and their team, and they did not submit a proposal. Dieta Lee, am I saying that correctly?
I'm not sure.
I don't reckon, we didn't interview them, so I'm not sure. It doesn't look like there were any library experience. And then Amy Ninn, who also did not have any library experience.
That was like more than half that did not have libraries.
Yeah. Because, I mean, it's, this is new work to libraries and it's just not really been.
Okay. And do we have a cost comparison, or is that not really relevant? Because I know we're not looking at the full proposal, but this is what?
I don't have that in this one.
Around 67 total.
Oh, here it is. Okay. Okay, so we asked for an assessment along with some consulting hours. The. I guess laptops are not as much fun as. Okay, so we ended up, so the people I read were people we asked to submit proposals. We ended up getting four proposals. They ranged in cost from $24,000 to $82,000, with two being in the $30,000 to $40,000 range.
Okay, so this is not the most expensive, but on the second most expensive.
Yeah. But it also encompasses a greater scope of work, because this was just to do an initial assessment, not the follow-up.
The follow-up. Okay.
Yeah. So.
More questions, comments? That's about next steps.
I would just say, sitting through the EDI Committee's presentation, the first year of work that was public-facing felt very comfortable to me. And I was like, this, this is where my brain goes when I think about library work. And then when it shifted into the more internally focused, still, even today, even though I've lived it for the last three years, I was like, this is very uncomfortable. And so I think that is something that we are all grappling with, is that this is a big shift in how we are looking at not only how we are working with our staff, but how we provide service to the public. And, and trying to build muscle internally so that we can provide the best service to the public. And I don't know what the right answer is. I don't know that any of us do. But I think that is a point of discomfort that we're all trying to figure out. And as the board, like, looking for guidance from all of you as to what direction you would like to see us go is really important. And, and hearing from our EDI Committee and our staff and what direction they want us to go, and knowing that you all are taking that into consideration is also really important.
So.
Would it be worthwhile to have, to ask Lily for how they're going to approach it? Like some sort of response to us written, or just sort of like how they would respond? How their approach would be different, being a library, just sort of something more, where she can give a little bit to it? Thank you. I don't know if it's a, if it's something that she's going to sort of customize. They are going to customize something different. Thank you for.
No, it's, I'm, Kelly has to do that to me all the time.
No, I appreciate that. No, I appreciate it.
My brain just defaults.
So if, if they are going to work with Culture Amp to customize a survey that's specific to a library, or if it is sort of, if it's just their interpretation that's going to be specific to libraries? That's what I'm wondering. How custom is this survey that's going to be done?
Well, when you say specific to libraries, because if you're talking about internal processes, I don't know that the internal processes are necessarily going to be that significantly different from another institutional, cultural environment. If you're talking about the service aspects, then I think that, yes, the library is going to be different. And it sounded like the proposal was focused primarily on internal processes. So from human resources and hiring and onboarding to, there wasn't a long list of processes, but I think that's really going to be where the focus is going to come on. And so I don't know that taking the time to push this up in a month to ask that question is going to help us. I think if we want to go back with the directive, if we are prepared to move forward with the proposal, it makes more sense. Because I think that the response when you were asking the question was, you know, very collaborative and interpretive, that they would be willing to customize to address the aspects that we communicate are, we believe to be unique and needing to be customized.
Agreed. They're very, yes.
Yeah.
They seem very open to.
Yeah.
So if we were sort of thinking of our EDI sort of as a pie, like what percentage of this is, you know, internal systemic issues? What part of it is served? Like, how does that break up?
I think it all ties together.
It all ties together, but this is a very specific portion of that.
Yeah, so when they're doing the survey.
It's a really great question. I don't know if I can.
Because I just, well, I guess what I'm thinking is, like, if, we've got to say we had a budget for it. Like, are we putting too much of our money into this specific area? And then when we decide to approach the service or approach the other aspects of it, yes, this is going to build on that. Are we going to have any money left over to do that? And I just, these are just questions I don't, I'm not sure.
The way that I see it is that spending this money, doing the internal work, getting the skills we need will actually, it's like, right, replacing your lights, you know, your incandescent with LED. You know, yes, you have to pay more perhaps to put them in, but then the ROI in terms of the lifespan ends up being much longer. And so if we're, you know, if we're taking that train-the-trainer model, where we can then use this continually within ourselves as well as within the community, then I feel like the costs will bear out and we'll, we'll see a huge return on that investment. That being said, I don't have a crystal ball, so like, I could be very wrong. But I do think knowing the staff that we have and knowing the thoughtfulness that they approach any of the work that they do, I can't imagine that we wouldn't have a ton, like, Kelly, when Kelly started, which was a long time ago now, but she was like, we need to have Collection HQ to help better manage our collections and to take a more data-informed approach. I was like, yes. And we rolled it out, and now it's just so much a part of the work of how we do collection management that staff don't even think about it. And, and that's what I want for this work. I want it to be so much a part of like, oh yeah, well, of course we do that quarterly survey to see how we're doing on our goals. And I think that Lily will give us the framework and the foundation to help us do that.
Okay. That helps.
I feel like there's also just like a sense of time urgency too, like with everything that's happening and all these conversations that we're having about books and all of these books, not here, but other places that are getting banned and like.
Oh yeah, today they, they, it's going for vote on the Senate. It passed the Senate Executive Committee, the bill I was talking about last week.
But, so, I mean, if we don't, if this is the way to address it and we start internally, we have to start internally before we're able to really address things externally. Like, the more we kick the can down the road, like, the less able our staff is going to feel prepared to address those things. That's also, I guess, another, there's a, there's a time sensitivity to it. These things are changing so quickly. All this stuff is happening so quickly. And I, I want our staff to be able to, like, I don't know how Lily will address this, but like, the book thing is a big thing for me. I know that's maybe not part of the internal work, but.
Oh, but it is.
But I want, I don't, when she was saying internal, I was thinking of HR processes or whatever. But I guess what I want is for the staff to feel empowered and comfortable in this changing environment. So like, she's addressed, sorry, they, I'm thinking about it. You know what was wrong? It came out of my mouth. That to me is also really important.
I just wanted to just mention, we're, in a couple of weeks, going to have the third part of a training that we've been doing in conjunction with some other libraries. That's exactly what you're talking about. The third one that's coming up is de-escalation. And so it's like, you know, so I, we're not like not doing it. Yeah, I mean, because we, yeah, we recognize we have an immediate need for people to, to get more comfortable. Yeah.
Yeah, and Kelly has really addressed that with the safety training that she's put together, of making sure that staff feel that they have the tools to work with the people that are coming in, that are saying things like, we shouldn't have, you know, you're grooming children because you have these books on the shelves. And so we've worked on giving staff talking points and hopefully creating safe spaces where staff know they don't have to interact with those people.
Yeah, and we're also putting procedures in place that kind of give staff a way to step away if they need to, or if it needs to be escalated, how do we go about doing that in a way that does not completely disrupt everybody's day? So, you know, it's stuff that we're learning as we're going, for sure. And there, there are training opportunities out there.
We just can go around the room real quickly for board members. The question right now is, in my mind, do we move forward with the proposal, or do we choose a different path? And so, let me just, you can quickly say, yes, you think we're in a position to go forward, or no, you think that we're not in a position to go forward with the proposal? Not a formal vote, but just getting.
Struggle.
Yeah.
You go first.
Well, I, I think I'm comfortable now with the concept of going forward. I felt that the key questions were answered. Biggest resonance for me is the cost. But I also feel more comfortable knowing that the cost is going to be spread out as the process goes forward.
Yeah, I also agree. I mean, I was concerned about the cost, again, given what we've already spent. But after hearing the proposals and the costs, I actually think, you know, because this is two phases, it's much more on the middle to lower range of what, of the other ones that we saw. And I think it's probably a lot more in-depth, at least from the proposal that, other proposal that we saw. So I'm also uncomfortable with the cost, but I also feel like this is something that we need to do. So I do think that we should move forward.
Uncomfortable moving forward. I think Lily's approach is the right next step for us. And as I've been sitting here, I've been reflecting on some of the hesitation. And I think some of it is just feeling maybe a little bit burned from the last experience, and understandably. And I think that we're never going to find a perfect fit, but for where we are right now and the direction that we want to go, Lily seems like the best fit for what we're trying to do. I'm also comfortable moving forward. I think it's, thinking about it as, as an investment and is a, makes a lot of sense to me and that resonates. And I think also knowing that the, that the staff is in support of working with Lily's reassurance.
Comfortable moving forward. I have confidence in Lily's work. And I agree that it's an investment, but I think it's also a priority and it's kind of the foundation is important. I just, I want Kate and the staff to feel like that, like we have, like this is an important issue and that they have our support and we can put the best foot forward.
I agree. I would, I would definitely see going forward. I think that Stacy hit what I wasn't able to verbalize, which was feeling burnt from the last experience. And I guess my sense is, please don't let it get to that point where you're looking at it going, oh, how did this happen? I think I want to know that somebody is dealing with this with a tight rein. And not that it has anything negative about Lily, but it, again, it's my perspective of, I don't want this to happen again. And, but I have every confidence that they will, they will proceed in a very professional way.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to ask if there is a motion to approve the Zane Consulting Comprehensive DEI Assessment and Strategy Proposal as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there a second?
A second.
Jimmy, thank you. Could we please have a roll call?
Christian?
Yes.
Jerk Lovinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Ms. Yum?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Kate, I would like to ask that you and the EDI Committee work with Lily to give more direction on, you know, the aspects of the library that we perceive need potentially customizing in terms of the process and as we're moving forward and doing the data collection and.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that we'll have, you know, one or two board members that would be interested in working with us along this process. Jimmy?
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye, Susan.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is the Decennial Committee on Local Government Efficiency Act. As you may recall, this was, Kate brought it to our attention last meeting, that there is this act that talks about having this committee. Kate was able to give a little bit more guidance, which was in the memo in the packet. The guidance was basically, we don't think you need to, but if you're not comfortable not going forward, then you could do it anyways. I felt comfortable after reading the memo that this is not something we need to rush to immediately do. And so my thought here is that unless there is a, you know, major desire by the rest of the board to have such a committee to get it going by June 10th, that we table this issue pending potentially further guidance from our council if they later change their opinion.
I agree. Whatever you said.
For further discussion. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Strategic Plan RFP Review. And so we have the seven proposals. Kate has given us the, well, her completion of the rubric with her outline and her ranking. And so the question is, do we want to spend a lot of time going through when doing a formal? And so the question is, do we wanna spend a lot of time going through when doing a formal rubric where we go through and analyze each one and do numbers on it and spend a lot of time on it? The end goal here is to say, okay, who do we wanna invite in to interview with? And the thought that Kate and I had was, rather than try and have multiple interviews at the next board meeting that we call a special meeting next month, separate and apart from the regular board meeting to interview whatever number that we ultimately decided we'd like to invite to be interviewed and to present. So that we're not having a meeting that, you know, just on this issue alone would go several hours. And so really the question is, what process will we like to go through in order to get to the decision on who to invite back? I mean, Kate has presented the rubric. We can use Kate's rubric. We can prepare our own rubric or if others have already prepared their own individual and, you know, ready to kind of go through and discuss one by one, we can do that. So I'll just throw it out. If anyone has thoughts, concerns, objections to the.
One of the things that I did was I looked at neighboring communities. And Highland Park used, they, I was just looking to see if I have the, if you go on their website, it's, it's a very interesting format and they use this Fast Forward Libraries.
It's with Amanda Standifer.
And I thought that was just a hard copy of what it might look like if that was somebody we wanted to, to talk to. And it was a sophisticated, but a different way of looking at it. So anyway, I thought looking at communities and what they had recently done might be helpful.
And I think that when it comes to deciding, Barbara, I agree. And the question right now really isn't, probably gonna hire one based upon what we've got now. The question is, who do we wanna come in to get the question answered, get a proposal and then decide who to hire?
I agree. I was just saying, I, I think that.
We should bring in Fast Forward.
That one of the people I would suggest is Fast Forward based on what they did in Highland Park.
You got to a different point. You were going much quicker to the.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine point. I guess maybe the way here to go through it to keep us kind of on time, because it's almost 10:00. I think we just can go using Kate's rubric. Does that count as Kate's, that it was helpful?
Okay, good. I'm curious what Maura thought. I know you're not a rubric fan.
I know, but I, I appreciate them. I just, yes.
I don't wanna spend the time trying to.
They're just so wordy, but yes.
So I think perhaps, let's start with the easy, I mean, the stuff that Kate has proposed that we strike to. She's looked at the high and the low ends and stricken the high and the low ends.
Oh, cost-wise?
Yeah, cost-wise. So. Right, they're way above.
But they got a low ranking anyway. I would, yeah.
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 Well, I was just gonna go, does anyone have any objection to the idea of striking the two that Kate has proposed we should strike in?
Can I make a further recommendation? Is that we go with the top three?
The top three, top three in what capacity?
Isn't the, the bottom thing the score?
Oh, yeah.
So I'm looking at Constructed Design, Ivy Group, and Essentium, Essentium, whatever, how do you say that?
I don't, I've only seen it written, so I would say the same.
I know that doesn't include your Fast Forward, Barbara, but I would say, I was gonna say go with Kate's recommendation and take the top three. I really don't think we should look at any more than three. So, I mean.
That's a lot of information.
Swap out Fast Forward for like the next closest, which is the Ivy Group. I'm, I'm okay with that or if Kate, you wanna look into that or if you wanna include Fast Forward as a fourth, but that would be as far as we should go, I think. It's just too much.
It is. I wasn't expecting seven proposals. That was a lot.
So the top three, I mean, looking at the pricing, so constructive is towards the higher end.
No, I'm looking at the score, not the pricing.
No, no, I, I understand. I'm saying let's also look at the pricing in addition to score, just we get an idea where we fall within the range. So constructive destruction will be at the high end. Ivy Group is towards the middle, but on the high side of the middle. And then Essentium is the low end. I mean, there's three clustered around that. And I think they're a little bit towards the middle of the three, four if you include Fast Forward. In that, you know, 20 to 30 range. So we would have two in the high end, one in the lower range. But based upon Kate's rubric, a bit higher, if we were to swap out one, which would be Ivy Group for Fast Forward, it would be one in the high end, two within the lower end range.
We could swap out Constructed Design since they're higher cost. I think go with the Fast Forward instead.
That's a possibility.
Ivy Group is still, their high end is pretty close to constructive.
Kate, I mean, did you see any significant advantage of constructive over the Ivy Group? One thing I'll point out, constructive is not a local, they're Oregon.
Yeah, that's.
The interview would be virtual.
They will come out for two in-person visits.
But not the interview necessarily.
Oh, right, exactly.
I'm talking.
Oh, the interview, sorry, sorry. Yeah, yeah, yes, exactly.
So everyone else is local?
Yeah. Ivy is not.
No, Ivy's out of state, Oregon.
Essentium is local. That's actually why they were able to have their cost a little less. And Fast Forward, Amanda's down by Peoria, so she's essentially local. But Essentium is in the Chicagoland area. And they brought their, they were able to lo, lower the cost because they're the travel costs. Which makes sense.
So was Ivy Group is west coast as well? Was that what you said?
Sorry, I've gotten them.
I can look it up, sorry. Sure, they're all.
I believe it's, yeah.
Other than coming out here, how much do they, like, how much time would they spend on the ground, these consultants that are, they be here a lot?
Last one, I thought it was.
Yeah.
So the last time we did what I would consider Strategic Planning Lite. And that was more like, we had one in person and we did meet with them here, you know, with Wendy here for the meetings. However, I would say that I'm, if we were doing this three years ago, I'd be like, oh, out of state, like, that's a lot. But I feel like we're now all so used to being able to adapt to doing online and being able to have that be effective, that it's less of a concern. I think it would be a concern if they said that they weren't gonna come out to do any of the work. I do think it's important to get that face-to-face communication with the board, with the staff, with the community.
Well, and it significantly affects the cost, it appears.
It, yeah, well, of course, right? Travel is, is more expensive.
And I think we should go with Fast Forward and Essentium and then pick one other one, either Ivy Group or Construction that were ranked kind of high.
Not to make this more difficult. I will say that all of these are the proposals if the board wants to change aspects of them. Like, this is what they think, you know, what they're proposing, but it's just like a contract, right? Like, we can absolutely negotiate and say, look, we have a hard stop at 30,000. What would you be able to give us? I'm not suggesting that that is what needs to happen, but just know that that is something as well.
Is it, it's constructive disruption, right?
Destruction.
I thought it was disruption.
Oh my God, I typed it wrong. You're right. It is not destruction. That wouldn't make any sense.
But um. That's not a reason to hire them or not, but I just.
Nope, um, I just can't type.
I'm not usually.
Yep.
That's.
It's disruption.
Disruption, not disruption.
And it just, has anyone seen, just to go on a tangent, the Glass Onion?
Yeah.
He keeps talking about the disruptors. Every time I read it, I thought about that. So it's just a bad, now you all can have that association too.
Sorry.
They're in Virginia. Ivy Group is Virginia.
So in the actual document, when they travel, we have to pay the actual, correct? Like the 6,000, I, I saw.
It's like an estimate.
Okay.
Right?
But that's on top of the, this price though. You know what I mean?
No, I incorporated, I incorporated all of the costs.
I got you, okay.
Incorporated their estimate, I guess, is the best way to say it.
That's, okay, that's helpful.
There's something just that bugs me about paying for travel costs when we have local vendors that can do it. I just, it's not what I prefer to spend money on unless, that's why I'm suggesting we pick maybe one of the ones that's non-local, but I would prefer to go with the two local ones. You know, their scores are pretty comparable on there. One is so much higher than the other.
So which two are you recommending for the SDM and the, what was the other one?
And Fast Forward, because number one, they're local, their cost is lower and Barbara saw that they did Highland Park, so.
And they've all done library work.
Do you know the director of Highland Park to?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I know Amanda.
Okay.
At Fast Forward. I mean, I, yeah, I've known her for years. So like, it's, she does great work. She used to work in a library. She's now working fully as a consultant doing strategic planning.
Okay.
And understands libraries very deeply, understands, you know, how to survey and gather quantitative data and analyze and all of that. Her approach also has the report that Barbara was referencing, but then she'll also do a one-pager. And, and so it's like, basically, you have different marketing materials that you can use depending on the audience and the level with which you wanna get into it. I, I don't know Essentium. I mean, their proposal was great, but I, you know, I, they're not someone I'd.
I have a kind of a comment, and I don't mean to like sound cocky, but I kind of want someone that understands where we are to begin with, like, we are doing very well. And it's like, don't tell us something we already know or like just pull some US Census data that all of us can do. Like, just like, I want someone that's like, to the point, sophisticated, give us value-add info that we can use. Like, that's just, because I did see some of them that were kind of a bit basic and I don't feel like we want those.
The thing that I liked, this is the Highland Park. And what I liked about it is that it has the listing for a vision and a mission. So those things are clearly the guiding principles behind what the plan is. So I, I always ask about our mission statement and our vision statement. So I, I think that any of these should include.
That is part of the proposal. We'll be doing a revamp of the mission, vision and values. So I just wanna point out, I know Ivy Group is on the higher end. One of the things that really impressed me with their proposal, well, one, I did have people ask me, like, a couple of people asked for some questions. They were the only one that asked to set up a time to meet with me to better understand the library and they had done extensive research already. They also do a, a deep dive into patron, you know, usage of the library. But more importantly, they'll use the GIS data to analyze non-users versus users and then do a market segmentation. So we'll not only know like where physically in the community non-users are, but what I, you know, what groups that actually encompasses, which is, to me, pretty helpful. Because, I mean, we can run the, you know, addresses against a GIS system, but to know, not who, like, oh, that's where Stacy lives, that's where more, but like to know the demographics and, you know, kind of what, what is it?
Then you'll know how to reach out.
Yeah, so they have a very, I mean.
Yeah.
That's good. So I'm gonna just move forward, because we got a lot to go, so. Yeah. Three or four is gonna be my first question. Do you, just going around the room, how many do you think we should bring in? Three or four? Three, three, three. Okay, so three it is. What I like to do is to have each one of us, you know, cast a vote as to the three we would like to bring in so we can kind of tabulate and see where we are. Rather than do it locally where there might be a little bit of pressure, do we have people? You don't feel the pressure? I just.
Does anyone feel pressure? That's fine.
Okay, then we can go around and.
Going for expedition?
Yeah.
Yes. I'm tallying.
Ivy, Fast Forward, Essentium.
You got that?
Got it.
Mine are exactly the same.
Mine are exactly the same.
That's the same.
Barbara?
Same.
I'm glad you went first.
And I'm, because Ivy Group is Virginia, I mean, I'll ask them if they'll come in person, but do we want to do?
I'm fine with it, maybe we're virtual, but.
No, no, for the presentation, you mean?
For next week, for the, or for next month, for the interview.
Totally virtual, yes.
That's okay.
Oh, 100%.
Yeah, virtual.
Because I mean, Essentium is right here in Chicago.
If they wanna come here, that's fine.
Okay, we'll give them, I'll give them the options.
The one that's out of state, I don't think we wanna put pressure on them. Yeah, I don't want to.
But if they know that their other vendors are local, I mean, just make sure they know that they're virtual, other vendors. If they wanna come, they can. If they wanna do it virtual, let them do it virtual too.
I'm gonna give them all the options.
Yeah. Yeah, they can all do it virtual.
But we're not paying for Ivy Group to come do the presentation, right?
She got it.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, obviously, that would be bananas. Also, Maura sent some helpful information about the interview questions. And so I just printed them out again. There's too many on here. I wanted to give you choices. I just wanna say that upfront in case people were like, we'll ask.
So we are not doing this at next month's board meeting. This is gonna be a separate.
We're gonna do a separate meeting.
Okay, because I think I might have to miss the 18th.
Jennifer's gonna be giving, asking for.
It'll be probably two hours, at least two hours by tomorrow.
Maura?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, here, why don't you give one to Kelly too?
So Kate and I had kind of put out there just to get feedback and I used to tell you to get it sometime during the week of the 22nd.
Of May?
Of May.
It's the week after the board meeting.
Yeah.
Because we don't wanna do it before the board meeting.
Because we want Janet to be officially sworn in.
So. Okay, good.
I'm gonna be right back.
Does he want, if you want to, Kate?
Yeah, just if there are any questions that you specifically don't wanna have, how do you wanna do them? I can do them where we have, like, I was, I was gonna create another rubric just to have. It's just helpful to have. And.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah.
So in the past, when we've had these kind of interview sessions, we.
We didn't have a formal interview session, because Carlos.
No, 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 I'm not talking about just strategic planning. I'm talking in general.
Oh, okay.
We've done interview sessions. We've had, you know, one person present the questions at the interview. Here, I think we could give them the questions ahead of time.
I agree.
So that they all three have the same set of questions to come in and, you know, respond to in their own way.
Yeah. We can do that.
Leaving you the trouble having to ask the questions.
Oh, I was a good question reader, though.
How did she do? Because they're talking about the board appointment. That was because you were so phenomenal.
Yeah, I mean, clearly if you were a disaster, I would remember.
Sharon said, every time you ask, it's like you're asking the question for the first time. Why do I remember that?
I mean, if we're gonna just ask them to present on answering these.
No, I don't think it should be limited to that. I think they should give a presentation, we ask them to, in their presentation, answer these questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, I'm thinking between presentation, question and answer, you know, you may be looking at 20 to 30 minutes for each one. And that's why I'm thinking more in at the two hours once we end up with a discussion afterwards.
Thank you. But no, yeah, this is helpful. Okay, are there any questions on here that you're not happy that we can just, okay. Then I'm gonna just share these with the consultants and let them know that we'll do, ask them to do a presentation outlining their process, reflecting on these in it, and then there'll be a Q and A. And if you do end up having additional thoughts on the questions after, after today, let me know.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I think we have too many questions.
We do?
Oh, yeah. If we're asking to keep it to, you know, 20 minutes to 30 minutes total, I think they could spend, just on these questions, that amount of time.
Yep.
I went through a presentation today where it went a lot longer than maybe we would anticipated.
Okay. I'm gonna suggest that we strike six and nine, and that we move eight to putting it on as something to be asked. That would be a good, like, follow-up question to ask if they don't address it. And, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna address, like, 12 and 13, right? And one is really essentially what they're doing.
I have no brainwash. My brain is gone. It's retired for the day.
Yeah, it's late.
So, you said six, and what was the one?
Um, six and nine, and then 12 and 13, strike. So, then we have, why is your approach best for us? How would you identify and make sure that we get information from these users? How are you going to use EDI and sustainability challenges? And then, how are you gonna basically, I guess, that kind of goes to two, number 10 goes to two as well. And then, talking about clear outcomes and developing a strategy that would allow us to assess our effectiveness with the plan, which could also be a follow-up question.
No, I like that.
Okay.
So, I think that is a little bit more streamlined. They don't have to hit on each one in depth.
No, but just make sure you cover what's in, yeah.
Sounds good.
Any other input on the question?
Sounds good.
So, I think we are now done, Kate, with all of the...
I do believe so.
Points on the strategic plan.
Yep.
Did you want to set a meeting date?
Jennifer's gonna contact you next week.
You're gonna do a Survey Monkey survey, is that what you're gonna do?
I think.
How you're gonna do the dates.
I'm typing, sorry.
Oh, no, you're gonna send out like a survey or for the date?
For what?
For the date, for the special meeting.
Interview for the special meeting to...
So, I thought you said May 22nd or May 24th.
Right, but you were gonna send out so that...
To see when other people could do it.
Do you add to the consultants?
Nope, just Kate's guys.
Just the board.
We're gonna just tell the consultants.
Yes, Jay, I will do that. Too late for me.
I think crawl, yes, fading.
Yeah, it's getting late. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the transfer of funds to debt service and CIF. So, here we have funds that need to be transferred, because we're at the end of the year. Anna, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe one of them is, we're approving the transfer, but the number is not final.
That is correct. You're just approving the, the concept. So, we have an excess of funds in the operating fund due to not collecting all of the property taxes. The debt service fund is about 2%, you know, low, and so, we will true that up. And then, we'll transfer the remaining money to the capital improvements fund to handle improvements such as the elevator modernization, I'm having trouble with that word, HVAC automation upgrade, we just, you know, we put the steam boiler in, so like, tho, those kinds of funds just help with the capital improvements of the building, so that we don't have to take out bonds in the future.
Okay. Any questions for Anna on the proposal? Is there a motion to approve the transfer of budgeted and surplus funds from the operating fund to the capital improvement fund while keeping the fund balance in accordance with the policy during the fiscal year closed process?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Maura. We need a roll call, please.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We also would need a motion to approve the transfer of the debt service fund net loss from the operating fund to the debt service fund to cover the uncollected property taxes.
I'll move to do that.
Thank you, Maura.
Second.
Barbara, thank you for seconding. We would need another roll call, please.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
We don't technically have to go into closed session. We could just... Okay, fair. I was trying to save us a couple minutes on things, and Jay, nope, that's fair. All right.
All right, so, next item on the agenda is Executive Director Performance Review. Is there a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Illinois statute 5 ILC S 120 2 C 1 for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel, or the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against employee of the public body or against legal counsel, or the public body to determine its validity?
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy.
Second.
Thank you. I do believe we need a roll call. Senator again?
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and we will go into... Okay, we're back from closed session. There is no action to take after the closed session. So, the next item on the agenda is the agenda building. At next month's meeting, we're gonna have the following items on the agenda. First, this, we're in of the trustees who have recently elected. It will be a presentation by the nominating committee and election of board officers for the next year. We will, not at the next meeting, but at a separate special meeting, be having the strategic plan consultant interviews. And then, on the next meeting's agenda will be personnel policy updates for professional memberships and tuition reimbursement. And as we just discussed, we will expect to have a closed session for the executive director performance review. Anything else anyone would like to ask be included on next month's agenda? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I will declare this meeting adjourned at 10:25.